It's your table.
Mr. Prince, you're gonna go forward? Do you have questions for him? Mr. Orlando?
Yeah, I'm up, but I have no questions for Mr. Baldass, so I yield to Mr. Prince.
Thank you.
Number one, lest I forget it, I move BVA 4, which is before you, which is the Resolution 1 of 2010. And then I have a few follow-up questions.
Mr. Kaplan, I would assume no objection. That's, I mean, we could take judicial notice of it anyway. That's fine, BVA 4 is in.
Thank you. Joe, let's start with Resolution 1 of 2010. That's a resolution from municipal authority, correct?
Sorry. Resolution 1 of 2010, did you just take that document from me? Yes, I did. That is the municipal authority's resolution.
To your knowledge, has that resolution ever been revoked?
It's been revised. There's a revised, comprehensive resolution.
When was that done?
I wanna say last, 2017, I believe.
And you have a copy of it?
I don't have a copy, as far as I know.
Would you sometime before the 22nd make copies of that and supply it, if you supply it to the solicitor? I'm sure she'll see to it, you all get it.
Okay.
I don't think it's necessary for, if it's something that we have, we could supply the copy, correct? I don't think it's necessary to have a witness supply a copy.
Off the record. Technically, I agree with you. Obviously, it's a slave authority, and you could certainly get it, but I'm maintaining the dichotomy, and he is the engineer for the authority, so I was asking him, in his capacity as an authority representative, to produce. Of course, you could produce it if you want.
Well, I would, I'm more inclined to have the township produce the document.
To the extent that there is a resolution that amended, Resolution 01 of 2010, the township will request the municipal authority to provide that, and we will provide it to everybody.
Thank you.
Simple.
Exhibit 13, you were asked a lot of questions about that by Mr. Kaplan. It is a letter that was sent by Carlino's engineer to DEP, correct?
Exhibit 13? Well, the first page of Exhibit 13 is a letter from Eber engineers to Pennsylvania DEP.
So the answer to that is yes.
It wasn't certain what the question exactly was.
I'll repeat it this way, now that I have it in front of me. Tara Benard's letter is a letter to John Venezi Ali at DEP, correct?
Oh, that's correct, yes.
And it's asking for some relief, albeit a change, what they interpret to be their existing approval. Is that correct?
I'm gonna object to relief. There's no, that's a mischaracterization. It's a change.
I'll change the wording.
Okay, please.
Are they asking for a change in their approval?
Asking for a reduction of flow, from one number to the next.
Is that a change?
Oh, yeah, it would be a change.
When DEP receives a request for a change, does DEP have the legal right to review the entire application?
Objection.
I don't know.
What's the basis of the objection?
What's the relevance?
It's already been asked and answered, so let's move on.
Go ahead.
I didn't hear the answer.
Well, he did answer the question, so.
I don't know if DEP has that legal, I don't know what DEP's legal authority is. I don't know.
Since the date of that letter, November 8, 2018, that being Tara Benard's letter, exhibit number 13, board exhibit number 13, has the municipal authority received any correspondence from DEP regarding this plan?
There was a letter, no, strike that, it was not for this plan. Not that I'm aware of.
Are you aware of any review being undertaken by DEP concerning this plan with regard to the proposed sewer line running through the condemned property taken from Eleanor?
I'm gonna object. It assumes facts that are not in evidence. It assumes that DEP has a copy of this plan. There's no evidence of that.
I think he can ask, to the extent that Joe knows, if the DEP reviewed a plan with the needsman across it. Joe can answer that question.
Alls I know is that DEP reviewed the attachment here, which has a bunch of questions on it, capacity and signature. I don't know that they've reviewed any plan.
I don't think that was my question, though. Would you read back the question to it?
Are you aware of any review being undertaken by DEP concerning this plan with regard to the proposed sewer line running through the condemned property taken from Eleanor?
With regard to the sewer, no, I'm not aware of anything.
Okay. Now, Mr. Kaplan, in his objection to my question a minute ago, said that there is no evidence the DEP has ever reviewed or seen this plan. Would you please look at the last page of Exhibit 13 and confirm that that is, in fact, a copy of the page of this plan? I'm not sure of the date, 2017.
You talking about the map?
Sheet 23, we're talking about, Mr. Prince?
Yes.
Yeah.
Date is 9/12/18.
Okay.
Isn't that the current plan?
What's the date of this? 9/12/18.
I mean, I guess, I think that's what's on there. I'm not certain.
Now, next, Mr. Baldass.
Wait a second.
That's not it.
No, that's not true.
It's 9/23. I mean, June 23.
10/16/18.
6/27/18.
That's not the latest revision.
No, the latest revision is October 16.
Well, then, it's not the same plan. This one has a different revised date on it. This one here, in the revision block says, I'm sorry, I can't read the number.
It says 9/12/18.
Thank you. That one in the revision block indicates 10, whatever.
It's the plan, it's just a different revision date, right?
Well, then, it's not the same plan.
I see. So, just so we're clear, your opinion is, if there's a revision date on a plan, looking at a page from the earlier revision, it is not the same plan, it's a different plan?
Oh, I don't know. I don't know how to answer that.
I'm asking you that because...
So if you put a revision date, as an engineer, you put a revision date on there, something likely changed on the plan. Although some engineers dump a revision date on there without that specific sheet changing. I don't know what Barn did on this plan. It means that I should be aware that there's something revised on that plan, right? That's what I would be, well, I would look for a change between the two.
Well, then, why didn't you issue a new review letter, since your review letter is as of the June 27, 18, plan, and this plan's been revised three times since then?
I haven't been asked to do another review of it.
So then, you'll agree with me, since it's changed in light of your comments you've just made, then the review letter, insofar as applicable to this plan, should be disregarded?
Honestly, I'm not sure where we're going with this whole thing. I'm not sure how to answer the question. I'm not sure what the question is.
If you can state your question in a different manner, and he can answer, we're...
That's his answer, we can live by that. You were asked a question by Mr. Kaplan about my client's connection to the municipal authority line. Wasn't my client's connection to the municipal authority line ordered by Judge Nagel?
I don't know. I don't remember what he ordered and what he did not order.
Well, you were, you testified in that matter, didn't you?
He answered the question, Mr. Prince. He says he doesn't remember.
I understand. You testified in that matter, didn't you?
I believe I did.
And you were the engineer that reviewed the application that was submitted to the municipal authority for sewer service pursuant to that court order, didn't you?
I imagine I was.
Did you ever see a land development plan submitted by BVA for sewer connection?
I did see a plan submitted by BVA for sewer connection.
A plan for a sewer line?
Sewer line, yeah.
Okay. Are you aware of any land development plans submitted to the township for that sewer line?
There was a sewer plan that was submitted for sewer connection. I'm not aware of any land development plans that were submitted for that parcel.
And that was submitted only to the municipal authority, correct?
I don't know.
May I have a minute, ma'am?
He said there might have been a resolution that amended this.
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Baldass.
You're done, right?
Okay.
We have it.
I have a question.
Okay.
Mr. Baldass, in your capacity as a solicitor for the municipal authority, did you review land development plans for what we referred to as the Learning Center and the Hopewell Pharmacy?
Excuse me, Mr. Fisher, he's not the solicitor.
I'm sorry, as an engineer, I elevated you.
Yeah. I guess that was a, I'm not so sure about that one.
I finally agree with someone.
I'm not so sure I wanna swim in that tank.
In your capacity as the engineer, did you review it?
Oh, yes, I did. Sorry.
All right. Will you tell us if either of those land development plans, those were both commercial developments, were they?
They were, yes.
And did either of those include onsite sewage disposal?
They did not.
Thank you. I have no other questions.
May I ask on the board, have questions for Mr. Baldass? Okay.
All right, thank you very much.
Can we go off the record for one second? Please proceed.
Okay, Mr. Baldass, do you have that Resolution 1 of 18 in front of you?
I have the first two pages and section...
So, I guess you're Resolution 1 of 18.
Oh, my bad, I'm sorry, yes.
Okay, got it?
Yes.
Do I understand that resolution to be a resolution setting a fee schedule in lieu of onsite effluent disposal?
It's pretty much what the title says, yes.
Mr. Fisher asked you about two developments that did not have effluent on-site. Did both of those developments seek applicability under Ordinance 1 of 2018 and pay a fee in lieu of?
I believe, I believe they seeked relief from that, but I don't know about payment. We'd have to talk to the authority secretary about that.
When you say relief of, relief of what?
I think they were required to provide a fee in lieu, but I don't know, I don't know the status of payment.
Okay. And is one of the two developments that he mentioned a development that belongs to the former supervisor, Hudvols?
No, that's not accurate.
Let me ask you if he knows.
No, I don't think so.
Now, turning to what we've marked BVA 6, which is Resolution 1 of 2017. Do you have that in front of you?
As I was saying, incorrectly, for the other one, I have the first two sheets of the resolution, and I have Sections 404 through 407.
Okay. Now, let me ask you a couple of questions about this one to clarify what you just identified. This resolution, the first two pages incorporate a detailed regulatory structure for the municipal authority. Is that correct?
Yes, I guess.
And the other two pages that are identified as Page 18 and 19 are Section 404 to 407 of that new unified structure, is that right?
Yes.
And 406 through 407 is a, excuse me, 406 is a reconstitution or repurposing, if you will, of Resolution 1 of 2010. Is that correct?
I don't know if it's a perfect reflection or not, but as far as I recall, it's very similar in nature.
And in fact, 406A says that there shall be onsite effluent disposal for all new developments, correct?
Yes.
And it doesn't discriminate between residential or commercial, does it?
Does not, as far as I know.
So it is consistent with Resolution 1 of 2010, correct?
Without reading 2010 here, I would say generally it looks to be, that's my recollection.
No further questions, thank you.
I have no questions, Mr. Baldwin.
I have just a couple of questions.
I'm sorry, I forgot one question. Can I ask it now? I'll have to go back. When you were talking about 1 of 10, and you were talking about this development, Mr. Kaplan asked you about the sections of 1 of 10 that authorize acquisition and submission of off-site property in lieu of onsite effluent disposal. Did you ever receive such a request with regard to this current plan from the Carlino developers, asking for off-site effluent disposal in lieu of?
Objection, that's not what I said.
I would agree, that's not what he said. He read Section 1, 2, and 3, which none of that relates to what you just stated. So I agree that that was not the question.
I'll restate the question, Mr. Baldass. Have you received, with regard to the current plan, any request from the Carlino developers for approval of off-site effluent disposal in lieu of onsite effluent disposal?
I have not.
No further questions, thank you.
So just a couple of quick questions. So, I believe that Mr. Prince has characterized this resolution, in fact, any one of them, 01 of 10 or 01 of 2018, as being absolute in that a developer must set aside disposal area. I don't believe that's an accurate characterization of the ordinance. The ordinance says, if determined feasible, that's what will happen. And the resolution also says, if onsite storage and disposal is determined to be, by the authority, to be unfeasible due to a whole load of things, then you don't, then there's no requirement for onsite disposal. Is that correct?
Objection. The language of the ordinance speaks for itself. Mr. Kaplan is re-quantifying and classifying the language. The language speaks for itself.
It's overruled. You characterized all of these resolutions equally, so overruled, you can answer the question.
I believe that, yeah, there are some, there is some language in the resolution that allows you to seek relief from providing land disposal.
Okay. And now, Resolution... on page 18, sorry, 19, paragraph D, provides, if onsite and off-site storage and disposal is determined to be, determined by the authority to be unfeasible, a fee in lieu of providing may be considered. The fee will be established by authority resolution and may be revised from time to time. This is a new provision, is it not? It first went into effect in 2017?
As far as I recall, yes.
And didn't that merely codify what the authority had done since, in some instances, since the plan had been open?
I don't think there was any connections. The only connections I recall is for anyone Village Associates, and I'm not sure how that was handled.
Okay.
I do recall this is, I think this is additional language compared to the previous resolution.
And then 18 then sets the fee schedule?
Correct.
I have no further questions.
I have a clarifying question. Isn't it, did the Learning Experience and Hopewell Pharmacy, were they approved prior to Resolution 1 of 2018?
I don't remember, quite honestly.
Okay.
Well, I have a question, just in terms of timing. They were after Resolution 1 of 2010.
Oh, yes, yes, they were.
Thank you.
And after, and they were after Resolution 1 of 2017, too, weren't they?
The Learning Center and...
Hopewell Pharmacy.
I'm not sure about that. We'd have to go back and look, I don't remember.
Still have Resolution 1 of 17 in front of you?
I do.
What's the execution date? Mine says January 10, 2017.
Yes, it does.
Learning Center was submitted before that.
So, yeah, it does. I don't remember when...
Deciding whether or not they were before or after Resolution 1 of 2017?
But the question was, was the development approved after January 2017?
Correct.
I think the question was the submittal of the plans, because that would be the operative date, if you...
Yeah, I don't recall when the plans were submitted. That's my whole point.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Mr. Prince, do you have another witness? Or does anyone on the board have any follow-up for Mr. Baldass? Mr. Baldass, thank you. Mr. Prince, who is your next witness?
Mr. Klein, please.
Okay, do we wanna talk about what we wanna do, about lunch? Why don't you give our twenty minutes to grab something? Back at like 10:00. That work? Okay. So the plan is that we're gonna go till 12:30, and then take a 20-minute break for everyone to grab something and come back at 10:00 to 1:00, and go until 2 o'clock.
And feel free, if you have to, you can eat here, if we have to, get that.
I think I can hold out till 2:00.
No, no. We wanna be fair.
I'm sorry, what was that? I didn't hear you.
Said if you brought your lunch, you can eat it.
As we progress. I thought you questioned my, we would be fair statement.
Pinone, B22, I guess.
I do.
May, can we go off the record just one second, just so I understand? Paul's calling Nate, and I assume that he's calling Andy, as of cross.
Yeah, I was gonna say that, thank you.
Yeah. And is that the end? There are no other witnesses?
I have no idea.
Well, wait a minute. We have, we have a letter, we have a ruling by the board that said we had to have a designation of other witnesses and the material that was gonna cover within 10 days of that last hearing.
There's no ruling like that.
We have nothing...
There was a discussion, there wasn't a ruling. The chairman asked that all parties provide notice of who your intended witnesses were. And I received nothing. I sent an email last week saying, hey, guys, heads up, who are you planning on calling? This is who I'm going to have available. No response. Sent an email yesterday, and I think you did respond yesterday. But I've not heard anything other than Mr. Klein, Mr. Heinrich, Mr. Baldass, and Mr. Pierceall.
That's what Mr. Prince is doing. I intend to call John Cropper, I intend to call Norman Ulrich, and Glenn Kilcheski. Ulrich and Kilcheski are both from LGL.
All right, I think it's important that at this juncture, we agree now, so we don't have any confusion going forward. You know, you need to remember, there's hardships on the board. We need to set schedules in order to make this work for everybody. We are all at your mercy right now, and you guys are the ones that are being paid to be here. We're doing this out of our duty and our civic responsibility. We wanna make sure we're fair to everybody, but we also can't have four days from now, five more people we wanna call as witnesses if we...
I'd like to make a comment.
Go ahead.
I don't agree with that. I agree with your characterizations, but it says it throughout the transcript, and we, and it was decided beforehand that we were not going to call our own engineers, like Norm Ulrich, who has put everything in writing, and we responded to it. We, this is totally about compliance with this plan.
Mr. Kaplan, to the extent that he wants to call Norm Ulrich to discuss or refute the points you brought forward on the waivers, I think that's appropriate. I don't wanna hear Norm Ulrich repeat what's in his letter. I don't think that's appropriate. If you're calling him with respect to his professional opinion on whether the waivers are merited, I think that's fair game, based on the testimony Mr. Kaplan's witness provided. But he's not gonna sit here and reread his points that we have in the exhibit.
Say that five times, and you don't have to remind me. I have no intention of having Mr. Ulrich read his November 1st letter.
I didn't say that five times, Mr. Orlando, and I asked you several times for an offer of proof on your witnesses, and you refused to say anything until right now. So, let's just set the record straight.
Well, I think that, I think that a ruling was made. I could get out the transcript, but I think that the chairman made a ruling that there would be a letter within 10 days, 10 days of what I don't remember, and it would also say who the people were and what the nature of the testimony would be.
Right, but the ruling was that I, the ruling was that I would write a letter requesting you to tell me who your witnesses were, and that was to happen within 10 days of the December 12 hearing. I received nothing from anybody. It doesn't matter. At this point in time...
You did not write such a letter.
I agree. I agree. And I'm saying, I have no problem, to the extent that you're calling as witnesses, to not repeat what's been established as far as the other exhibits. I think that's fair game. Can we proceed with this witness?
Just two questions, if you can, from what you're saying now. Number one, I then understand that Mr. Ulrich's reports has written, as included, will be part of the record that the board will consider.
We already agreed to that, Mr. Prince. That's what we agreed to, right?
Asking for confirmation.
Yes, that is, we have confirmed that.
And number two, I have never seen a statement before presently, or presently, from Mr. Kaplan with regard to his witnesses. So, he's already put on his case. I guess the only question then remains is whether he intends to produce rebuttal witnesses, and if he does, then of course, our understanding that we just gave you with regard to who we may call is under and subject to that rebuttal. The other thing is, Mr. Orlando asked for a subpoena for, I think he did, if I'm wrong, I apologize, for John Venezi Ali, and unfortunately, they were not...
That's not accurate. He's never asked for a subpoena for John Venezi Ali.
Well, I'll ask for a subpoena for Mr. Venezi Ali, and I will endeavor to have him here for the 22nd.
Well, we are not issuing a subpoena.
Well, then, that answers that, and then you'll have, you have my objection with regard to subpoenas as to Mr. Venezi Ali and this request. That's it.
So noted. Please proceed with your questions to Mr. Klein.
Mr. Klein, please state your status as an engineer with regard to this township.
Pinone is the appointed township engineer.
For what purpose?
To assist in any aspects of engineering that the township would need, notably land development, subdivision reviews.
As, strike that, when was Pinone appointed?
We were most recently appointed here at the reorganization meeting in January of 2019, and we've been the township engineer, I believe, now going back two or three years.
And have you been requested during the course of that two or three years to review any other land developments, that is, other than the current one?
Yes.
For us?
Yes.
How many?
Maybe somewhere between eight to 12, give or take.
Thank you. Would you inform us, please, of how many townships Pinone represents as engineer?
I wouldn't be able to, I wouldn't be able to guess that, but I'm certainly over 50 in the Philadelphia region, give or take.
And in how many of those townships do you personally serve as the engineer?
I personally serve as the engineer in, one, two, three, probably four municipalities currently.
How long have you been a certified engineer, you appear rather young to me, but...
Well, thank you.
That's because I'm old.
I, I've been working at Pinone for 18 years, and I've been a professional engineer, a PE, for, I believe, about 15 or 16 of those.
Has your firm ever provided, and, has your firm ever provided any engineering services for any of the Carlino entities?
I do not believe we've, we've done so.
I'm going to try and shorten things a minute, you've been present here this morning, is that right?
Correct.
And you heard the questions I asked with regard to the sewer easement, that appears running behind the proposed Giant store on an east-to-west basis, from the western boundary line to the main sewer line and street that appears on the east side of the development, you heard those questions?
Yes.
Yeah, I've got one, thanks. Are you familiar with the ownership block that appears on the plan?
The ownership block?
That appears on the plan.
Yeah, I believe so.
Does the ownership block reflect any party other than Carlino Waters and now, as amended by letter, the township?
Other than that, I don't believe so.
For ease, Madam Chairman, for the Board members and Mr. Kaplan, I'm going to produce a group of emails that I will be questioning Mr. Pinone about sequentially.
His name is Mr. Klein, and I'm not the Chairman. I'm not the Chairman or Chairwoman.
I would love to be Mr. Pinone, yes.
No, you wouldn't, he's 80 years old.
But he'd like to have the ownership interest.
Or close to.
Thank you.
Maybe one of the sons.
Is he, couldn't work these as an exhibits?
Who knows?
Not if you didn't ask. So, first, Mr. Klein...
Mr. Prince, do you want this to be marked as an exhibit?
Yes, do you want to do it collectively or individually?
I think it'd be collective.
BVA 7?
I think it's BVA 6.
7.
Your BVA 7.
6 was Resolution 1 of 2017.
So we'll, we'll identify this as, the, the front page is being an email from F Waters at COX.net dated November 30th, 2016, to Jenny R. Frith, F-R-I-T-H, and it is containing one, two, three, eight pages.
Collectively labeled Pinone emails.
Okay, we'll write Pinone email on the top.
So...
Excuse me, I got way more than eight pages.
Well, that's what he handed me, eight pages.
I was only, I was only handed one page.
Well, it doesn't look like Mr. Klein has the same amount of pages, he has two.
I have one page, yeah.
One page.
That's right, there are eight pages.
Can you give Mr. Klein all eight pages, because he doesn't have them?
Well, I don't want him to have all eight pages, I'll give them to him sequentially as I ask him about them.
Well, then we can't mark them collectively, sir.
Adam, you decided to mark them collectively.
No, that, I...
I don't care which way we mark.
Okay, these are your exhibits, if you'd like them marked, then please ask us to mark them in a certain way, they're your exhibits. I don't know what's in your head about how you're intending to bring these forth.
Then, then BVA 7 is the first email. I gave him my copy. And BVA 7 will be the 11th, the November 30th, 2016 Waters email.
For future hearings, if you could come prepared with your exhibits pre-marked, and enough copies for all the Board members, all the lawyers, and all the witnesses, it would really expedite the process. Just as I have done with my exhibits, it would be helpful if you could do that, because this is taking a lot of time.
Were we marking them individually, I was trying to...
Yes, now, now, we've switched, we're marking them individually.
I would have been happy to do that if I had known how you wanted them marked, Madam Solicitor.
All right, so we'll start out with BVA 7.
Mr. Prince, it's your case, please proceed.
I will see to it, we do that in the future. Do you have the email in front of you?
I have a, a one page here, is an email from F Waters at COX.net.
And it's an email that goes to an individual named Frith, is that the email you have in front of you?
Asked for an offer of proof.
Uh, yeah, it appears to be.
Asked for an offer of proof, this looks like a document from between people who are not here, this is not a public document, I, I, I asked for an offer of proof.
It's a document that was authored by Tom Waters, who was one of the applicants on the plan before you, number one. Number two, it is an email that was previously submitted in a hearing, and I have the notes of testimony.
But, Mr. Prince, how would he have any, how would he know what this document is, he has, he's never seen it before, how is he...
Adam, I haven't asked him a question yet.
He's asking...
He has to authenticate it.
All I asked him was whether he had it in front of him.
But he has to authenticate it.
I didn't ask him to authenticate it, he does not have to authenticate it. I, I asked for an offer of proof.
Okay, what, the offer?
The offer of proof, all right, right, what was your offer of proof, what was your offer of proof?
The email from Mr. Waters, who is a principal in this matter, who owns the property in fee, subject to the equitable ownership granted to Carlino. Mr. Waters is discussing an easement, which I believe is the mystery easement that appears on the plan. He clearly describes what they're intending to do, and it relates to actually issuing, and if you read the letter and then look at the bottom of the email, he says that he is signing it and sending it, which, under Pennsylvania law, constitutes a valid easement, even if it's not recorded. So, it appears that Mr. Waters and the family has granted this easement, what it doesn't tell us is who it is to, but it is further evidence to establish that there was in fact an easement granted, in which event, there is an owner who has to be a party to this, who is not, in violation of your zoning ordinance, that's the relevance. This is, this is hearsay, he is presenting this document for the truth of some matter supposedly disclosed by this document. We don't even know what it is, and Tom Waters is not here, and this is not an admission of a party or anything like that, this is hearsay and is not admissible.
Sustained, I agree, this is not...
And, and, there's no conceivable way...
Right, your, the objection has been sustained, we don't need to further discuss it, move on.
Ms. Camp.
Mr. Prince, the objection has been sustained.
Under the rules of evidence, it is highly admissible, he is a party.
Who...
Mr. Waters is a party to the ownership block.
Sustained, move on, move on, your objection is noted, move on.
You will please note that this is further evidence of the bias and prejudice...
We understand your point, move on.
...that we have objected to.
I don't know how he expects Nate to read this, if he doesn't know what it's about, how does Nate talk about this letter? Makes no sense. I don't understand why Joe...
That's Mr. Klein, which is BVA exhibit number... Eight?
Eight.
An email from Mr. Pierceall to Ms. Camp, would you please read that to yourself?
Do you have other copies for the rest of us?
We already have them, it's in the stack, second part.
Oh, okay.
I did come prepared with the copies. This is an email from Scott Pierceall to Kristen, how is Nate Klein going, I, again, I think this is hearsay.
This is cross-examination, and the rules of evidence apply, and every time we make an objection, we waste 10 more minutes without being a questioner.
Nate was copied on this email, he's, he received it.
Okay.
Mr. Prince, what is your question with respect to BVA 8?
Mm-hmm, I'll give it back to you. Were you aware of the township's joinder in this plan when you wrote your various opinion letters, including the last one on November 2nd?
Can you explain what you mean by joinder?
The letter the township issued indicating that it would join in the plan for purposes of satisfying the zoning objection that all parties having interests must be a party to the plan.
I, I don't believe I was aware of that, no.
You commented in at least one of your review letters, did you not, on the issue of ownership?
I believe I did.
Can you point out to us in your review letter where you commented on that?
Could you refer to, which, which letter are you referring to?
Do you have them in front of you?
Uh, I have the exhibit book.
You don't have your review letters?
I have our most recent review letter, but I believe there was multiple review letters for this project, so if you could be more specific, we could focus on the question at hand.
Mr. Klein, subject to seeing all of your review letters and finding that, were you producing your review letters? Because I don't think they're all in the book as township submissions, I'll just ask if you remember commenting on that issue?
I do believe we had a comment regarding ownership.
Did Mr. Pierceall have any conversation with you in which he advised you of the objection I raised to the Board of Supervisors regarding the ownership issue and the fact that the plan showed development of the LNR condemned property, but the township was not an applicant?
I can't see I specifically recall that, as we got involved in this project, there were certainly discussions to bring me up to speed. There was a lot of history on this project, so I can't recall every, you know, specific discussion.
Do you recall any discussion with Mr. Pierceall about that subject, that's a rather unique subject?
I, I remember being informed that there was that unique aspect to this project.
How do you recall that you were informed?
It may have been a discussion, it may have been when I grabbed some plans, it may have been an email or over the phone, but, you know, again, I remember being informed by somebody that there was some history to this project.
So, your recollection is, at this point, that it was oral advice?
I, I don't recall.
So you don't know whether it was oral or written, or who did it?
Correct.
Somebody did.
Yes.
Were you present in October of 2018 at the Planning Commission meeting, where I chatted with Mr. Oost, the Solicitor, regarding the submission of LTL's report?
I, I have to double-check my calendar, I've been at most Planning Commission meetings, so I believe I was there, if you're telling me I was there, I'll take your word for it.
Well, if you want to check your calendar to make sure, go ahead, check your calendar.
Sure.
Do you have a document that was produced from that meeting? I was just curious, if you'd hurry it up, you could show them that he was there.
Yeah, I just don't want to assume I was there, because I don't go to every single one, so, do we, what was the date again there, Mr. Prince?
The, the October meeting.
October...
2018.
In front of me, so I can't tell you.
Was that the, the meeting the Planning Commission voted to approve?
If you're asking if he was at an October Planning Commission, that you don't have a date to give him, how is he going to remember if you don't know the date?
He's looking at his calendar.
It doesn't matter, you gotta, you gotta be more specific, this is getting a little crazy.
Yeah, it's not coming up in my calendar, I apologize, was that, if I may, was that, was that the meeting the Planning Commission made a recommendation at?
No.
The October meeting of the Planning Commission was on October 3rd, 2018.
Thank you.
So does your calendar show that on October 3rd you were there?
It does appear I was there, yes.
Thank you. Do you recall my discussion with Mr. Oost requesting that LTL's reports, which had therefore been submitted, be tendered to you for review?
Can you repeat that?
Do you recall my conversation, my public conversation with the Solicitor, requesting that LTL's reviews, which had therefore been submitted in this matter, be provided to you for comment?
Yes, I believe so.
Do you recall at the November Planning Commission meeting, which would have been one month later, Mr. Schreiber, do you recall me asking then whether or not you had received LTL's reports?
I believe that was discussed as well.
Do you recall that I questioned why you had not received the reports, and why you had not reviewed them? And do you recall your response to that?
I believe I had reviewed them, but had not issued any sort of correspondence at that time.
Do you recall you said the comments were extensive, and that you hadn't had time to do a review?
Issue a formal review, I recall stating, yes.
When exactly, if you can tell us, and I would like the exact date, if your records can confirm it, did you receive LTL's review letters?
I, I don't know that off the top of my head, and I, I don't know that I have the information to check.
File there, will your file tell you when you received them?
Not necessarily, no.
So, did you receive them with a transmittal letter?
I presume I received them via email from the township in some capacity, but I'd have to go back through my email records to see when it was received.
Will you do that and provide me with an email response as to when your file indicates you received them?
Yeah.
After the hearing?
Why?
Is that...
Mr. Prince, how is that relevant?
I won't know until I see the email.
Come on, this isn't a fishing expedition.
Yeah, offer of proof.
Not a fishing expedition.
The offer of proof is what is in the content of the email, and whether the email included content with advice or direction on how to treat LTL's reports.
The nine million right to know request is so simple, you don't...
Yeah, I, I, I agree.
Well, because it wasn't included in any right to know.
Well, whose fault is that?
Yours. Township was, received the right to know request, and it wasn't included in the response.
And the township does a good faith effort to comply with those very voluminous right to know requests.
What is the problem, Madam Solicitor, all I'm asking him to do is consult his records.
It's not relevant to a question relating to whether this plan complies with the code or not, that's why there's an objection.
There's a simple answer, there's, there's no discovery under, under the municipality's planning code.
There's a simple answer, there's no discovery under the municipality's planning code, and this is clearly an attempt to do discovery.
Exactly.
Why did you prepare a response to LTL's review, or at least a portion of LTL's review, in December after this matter was already scheduled for a hearing?
Regarding the timing, I can't speak to the timing. I was requested to prepare a letter, and I prepared the letter.
Who requested that?
I believe Ms. Camp requested I prepare a letter addressing LTL's letter.
Next, I want to show you any... do you have the emails of the group I gave you? It'll be BVA 9, it's the next email in your pile, it's... Excuse me, I think we laid down BVA 8, it's the July 11th, 18 Pierceall email, I have it. Let me show this to you. Large portions of documents that are submitted as exhibits. Are we going to do that in these proceedings or not? And I'm asking only so I know how to...
Yeah, I don't think we need to reread it all. But, I'm sorry, the email from Scott to Nate, myself, Tom Esty, John Larkin dated July 12th, is that what you're... BVA 9?
July 11th.
No, July 8th. BVA 8. We're going back to the second page.
Okay, I'm sorry.
No.
Everyone overeaged.
Okay, right.
If I may clarify, Mr. Prince, you handed me, again, a copy of BVA 8, again? I have two copies of that, is that what you're referring to?
Yeah.
Sorry.
Okay. That's what I'm thinking, maybe you got the normal one.
That's why we can't find it. Thank you.
It's cold in here? No, it's too cold in here. What's that?
Okay, did you have a chance to read that now?
Yes.
This email from Mr. Pierceall to Ms. Camp, it's reflecting that he called Inland Design to let them know that you would be doing a review of this plan. And he says he talked with you about reviewing the plans. Is that the first time you were aware he was... that you were going to do this review?
I wasn't aware... I only became aware I was doing the review when Mr. Pierceall let me know I was doing the review.
In the phone call that he references in this email?
He's not... there's no reference to a specific phone call, so I can't be certain which phone call he's referring to there. It just says he called me. I don't know, again, what that date was or what call that was. Scott and I talk frequently.
Well, he had to have called you July 11th or earlier.
I presume so.
Since he says, "I called Nate," he doesn't say, "I'm going to call him," right?
Correct.
Okay, is that the first time you became aware that you were doing, that Panoni was doing, the review of this set of plans?
Yes.
Okay. Now, next, I want to show you BVA 9, which unless I am out of order, is an email dated July 12th, and it is from you, Mr. Pierceall. There are two emails on this page. I'm asking you about the email at the bottom of the page that is, as I said, from you, Mr. Pierceall. Please read this.
I'm sorry, you asked me to review the email at the bottom of the page only?
Yes.
Okay. Okay.
It says you've already spoken to Chuck Dobson.
Yes.
And you intend to meet with him to get up to speed.
Yes.
What did you mean by that?
At the time, Mr. Dobson actually had the entire plan submission at his office, so I went to his office to get the plan submission, and he explained to me what the changes were in this most recent plan, specifically regarding the removal, I believe it was a bank pad, possibly, on the previous plan. So he brought me up to speed on what this new plan was.
How did Mr. Dobson come to have this plan submitted in July of 2018?
You'd have to ask Mr. Dobson.
Who told you to go to Mr. Dobson's office in order to see the plan?
I don't know that anybody told me to. I know Mr. Dobson, his office is within five minutes of my office. I may have suggested I would go pick those plans up. I also deal with Mr. Dobson on multiple other projects, so opportunity to connect on some other projects as well.
I guess what confuses me is how you knew that Mr. Dobson had the plans. He told you he had them?
No, I believe at some point somebody at the township, whether it was Mr. Pierceall or the secretary at the time, said they had been given to Inland Design, and they had a copy, and that's how I found out they were at their office.
Do you remember who told you that?
It may have been Scott, it may have been... I don't know if Mary Beth was still here at the time, or if that was Mary that's here now, I don't recall.
So, you met with Mr. Dobson?
Yes.
Describe the meeting for us.
I met at his office, again...
Question as to relevance. Yeah, I would say, get to your point on what your question's pertaining to of the meeting.
Yeah, I believe I already explained.
I'm getting to what he was told about the plan. This was supposed to be an independent plan, an independent review, and the board, per documents I've seen, directed that this was to be reviewed by Panoni and not by Inland Design. And I'm trying to inquire and find out why the plan went to Inland Design, why it was reviewed by Inland Design, and what Inland Design told Panoni about it.
This is...
And the only way I can do it is to inquire sequentially, because that's the best way ultimately for the board to know what occurred in this matter.
Mr. Prince, I think the board is well aware that Mr. Pierceall thought that Inland Design would be doing the review, and therefore instructed Mary Slade, the secretary, to send the plans, as she typically does, to the township consultants. They were mistakenly sent to Inland. The board at a public meeting corrected that and said, "No, we instructed Panoni, the new engineer, to take a fresh look at this and be the engineer on this plan, and therefore instructed, you know, Nate to get the plans from Inland Design." And BVA reflects that, that Scott... Mr. Pierceall indicates, okay, I'll call Chuck Dobson from Inland and tell him that, no, Panoni's doing the review. So that's... there's nothing to hide here.
Well, that's why I'm trying to get through it.
Okay, so, so, that's... Those were... that was stated at a public meeting. That correction of who should be reviewing the plans occurred at a board public meeting. So, I'm not sure Mr. Klein knew that, but he knew he had to go pick up the plans from Inland Design and did so.
I should need to say this, Madam Solicitor, but you know, we've raised repeatedly the question of bias and prejudice, and I am trying to get at what occurred here.
And we've just told you, so please move on.
To find out what occurred, because as Mr. Kaplan pointed out, we don't have discovery.
We just explained this facts to you, so if you have anything else relating to that relevant that Nate can talk to, please proceed.
I want to know what Mr. Dobson told him about the plan.
And that... please answer that, Mr. Klein.
I believe I already answered that. He explained to me what happened, the difference in the plan from the previous plan to this new plan that was submitted that didn't have the bank pads. I mean, we may have met for, I mean, if, 15 minutes, if that, and we talked about multiple other projects that I have ongoing in multiple other townships.
So, it's your testimony that the extent of the conversation with Dobson about this plan related only to the fact that the bank had been removed?
Yes, he showed me the difference between the previous plan and the new plan was the crux of the conversation.
Did he show you his prior review letters?
He did not provide those to me at that time, no.
Did he provide them to you subsequently?
I don't know that he did, no.
Did Mr. Pierceall supply them to you?
I believe we have copies of them, yes. I think we have copies of those, I'd have to check my files.
You say you have copies, you mean you received them from Mr. Pierceall?
I think so, but again, I would have to confirm and go through my files.
Next, I want to... Look at the response that appears from Mr. Pierceall at the top of the page that I gave you. It's the same email page.
BVA 9.
And did you receive that response before you spoke to Mr. Dobson?
I don't recall the exact time or date I met with Mr. Dobson, so I cannot... I do not know.
But you can see what time, if you look at the email, you'll see what time the email says it was sent at the top. And if you look at the time your email was sent, does that aid you in determining whether or not you received it before you saw Mr. Dobson?
I believe I received this email before I met with Dobson. Mr. Dobson, that appears to be the case?
I'm going to object to this line of questioning. I tried to adhere to what you said, but this is a total waste of time, and it's irrelevant. It's not part of what we're supposed to be here about. We're supposed to be here about whether our plan complies with the ordinance or not. We've spent 15 or 20 minutes, when we don't have a whole heck of a lot of time, on when Nate went to this office or that. This is... in my words, this has got to stop, and it's got to be put back on the track where it's... we're getting relevant information here. So take that as an objection to this line of questioning based on relevance.
To Prince.
If Mr. Dobson did... excuse me, Mr. Klein did a review for you, at least one, there's actually three reviews of this matter, you've introduced one of them in your binder, he is the township's engineer. I certainly have the right to inquire as to his opinions, how he formed those opinions, what influenced those opinions, what he was...
But then just ask those questions. You're not getting to those questions.
Yes, I am, Madam.
No, you're not. Can you get to them more quickly, please? We have a very limited timeframe here.
I believe that if you would ask the reporter to examine the quantity of time taken by my questions compared to the quantity of time used in objections, you would say it's not me delaying that.
Mr. Prince, please just get to the questions that are relevant.
Madam, they are relevant.
Then get to the question.
Would you...
I have to say one thing. Mr. Klein's own letters, every one, says, quote, "We have not reviewed previously submitted or approved plans for previous correspondence." And he's just now said that he did review them.
That's not what I said. I said I received them. I did not say I reviewed them, I said I received them.
Yes, but you did read them, didn't you?
No, I can't say I've read any of the court decisions in length, I can't say I've read any of the inland letters in length, no.
I didn't ask you if you read them at length. You did read and review inland's reports, didn't you?
No, I did not. No, I don't believe I have.
Okay. Mr. Pierceall in that email said that "my client would appeal at any opportunity whether there were any valid basis for the appeal at all." Did that have any effect on you?
I reviewed the plan per the codes.
That email goes on to say that he encouraged Mr. Miller and Mr. Kaplan to reach out to you. Did they reach out to you?
I've spoken to Mr. Miller and Mr. Kaplan, yes.
How many times?
I'm sure a handful of times, maybe, between them.
You have a record of when?
I do not keep a record of phone calls, no.
Did you memorialize the conversations?
I don't do that, no, on a regular basis.
So, there is no record now, extend, as I understand your testimony, of when they called, who called, or what was said?
No.
Finally, he says he's going to gather the inland design review letters and send them to you, and would you say now that that was probably how you received them, or why you received them?
Yeah, whether it came from Scott, or maybe Luke, or Mary, but, yeah, again, we received them from the township is probably what happened here.
Next, I have an email that is now, I guess, BVA 10. Which is 7/12/18 from Pierceall to Mary Slade. Ed Al.
Okay.
Now, it says in the body of the email that Peter spoke with you that afternoon, and that you met with Mr. Dobson that afternoon as well, so that he could bring you up to speed on their previous reviews. Is that what it says?
Scott's email says Chuck Dobson and Nate met this afternoon to discuss the project to bring Nate up to speed on Inland Design's previous reviews. That's what the email says.
And the Peter to which it refers, is that Peter Miller, if you know?
It is Peter Miller, yes.
In doing an independent review for the township, which is what you were doing in this case, do you consider it appropriate to talk with one of the principals?
I have no issue with that, no.
By no issue with it, do you mean you don't see anything wrong with doing that?
I would do that on every project I've probably worked on in my career.
Okay. And, just so I'm not confused from this, is this a reference by Mr. Pierceall to another meeting with Mr. Dobson? Or is this a reference to the one meeting you already testified about?
I only met with Mr. Dobson to pick up the plans on one occasion.
Okay, thanks. Next email will be 11, and that is... An email dated July 20th, 2018, from Scott Pierceall himself.
All right, wait, what is this part of now? Is this BVA 11?
This is BVA 11.
All right, so that... All right, so the second part, correct?
I'm sorry?
The top part is from Ms. Camp. You want to go down to... from Scott Pierceall's, correct?
From Scott Pierceall to Mr. Klein, yeah.
Okay.
Mr. Prince, do you have a question with regard to BVA eleven?
Yes, I do.
Okay, please ask it.
I'm getting there. There's a paragraph there, the first paragraph, I call it. First of all, I guess I should say, do you recall receiving that email?
Yes, this looks familiar.
Okay. In the first paragraph, he wants you to be aware of my commentary, but not change your approach to the plan review. What approach to the plan is he referring to?
I think as we discussed earlier, taking a fresh, new, independent look at the plan set that was submitted. As opposed to going back through much, you know, legal testimony, court decisions, other reviews from other parties. It was to look at the new submission as a new submission.
A twelve email in the chain, which is July twenty fifth, 2018, an email back and forth between Mr. Pierceall and Supervisor Winters.
Okay.
Now, Mr. Pierceall forwarded that to you and to Inland twenty-six minutes after he responded to Mr. Winters. You've read that?
Yes.
What background information did Mr. Dobson and Mr. Padula provide you with in the meeting to which Mr. Pierceall was referring?
Sure, I've answered that question twice previously, I believe. Again, it was the difference in the previous plan to the new plan, bringing me up to speed on the project.
Was there any written materials?
Just, I believe it was just the entire submission that the applicant had made, that they were handing over to me.
And when you say the entire submission, you're referring to the current submission?
The initial of these multiple submissions.
My plans and documents.
Correct.
When he says he received information from Yurkis and provided that, do you know what Yurkis' information? Because I didn't see anything involving Yurkis in the submission to which you refer, which was made available to us digitally by the township.
Let me just read that again. Again, I don't believe I got any additional correspondence when I met with Chuck. Like I said, I believe Scott or somebody at the township provided me some of the previous project correspondence, such as Inland's reviews. I assume Yurkis' reviews were probably part of that package.
Well, you didn't read it, so you don't know whether it was in there or not.
Yeah, again, I didn't go through those letters as part of my review, no.
Do you have any guess why he thought it necessary to share that correspondence with you? Objection.
You would have to ask Scott.
I would agree, overruled.
I mean, meaning he can't answer the question, because it's not.
You'll get there.
On the July twentieth email, I've highlighted a sentence for you, do you see that?
Yes.
Would you read that sentence out loud, please?
No one had reviewed the 2018 plan submission at that point.
Did Mr. Dobson in your meeting give you any indication or reason to believe that he had done a review of the 2018 plan? The plan that's currently before us?
I don't recall.
But as I understand your prior answers, he didn't give you any document or any other written materials indicating a review of the plan? All he gave you was the submission that Mr. Kaplan made on behalf of Carlino.
If I may, you're referring to any reviews of the 2018 submission?
Yes.
He did not give me anything regarding that, no.
Very next document, which is BVA twelve, no, thirteen, if I'm counting right, is Inland Design's objection, this is clearly hearsay. I don't think there's a question that he can ask Mr. Klein about this that would be relevant or would not be hearsay.
The only thing I could see on this would be if there was an indication that there was multiple meetings with Mr. Klein, and I don't see that.
There's an indication that there were reviews done by Inland Design. Then call Inland Design, not Mr. Klein.
And you heard Mr. Klein just tell you that he did not have a meeting where Inland Design provided him advice on to how to review the plans. Mr. Klein has already said he did an independent review without looking at anything from prior plans. Inland Design did not produce a letter. If they had, the board would have received it. Inland Design would have worked for the Board of Supervisors. And the letter would have gone to the Board of Supervisors and you would have received a copy. That did not occur.
But I have to make, I have to make a point here. We're treating this as if reviewing past reviews or Inland would be wrong. There would be nothing wrong with that. There's nothing improper had they done so. So we're wasting all of this time on a false premise that there's some rules here that Nate Klein has to be in a sterile container when he reviews these plans. This is ridiculous.
I think the reason, though, is we, the board, had requested Panoni do the review, not Inland.
Right.
So take it up with Inland.
Well, excuse me, sir. How am I supposed to know that if I wasn't copied on our township manager's email that he forwarded everything?
Emails are to you, Mr. Winters.
I'm talking about the email that he forwarded the whole entire drop box to Nate and did not forward it to the board.
That's not the proper circumstance here.
That's not what the board asked either.
No.
So it's a little upsetting to hear that.
It got down to the substance of this.
Well, it certainly doesn't help, you know, fourth plan, having this different review, getting a new, fresh set of eyes, meet with the previous engineer.
It's nonsense.
Sure, how's that not nonsense?
But it didn't happen. But he received, as Mr. Klein just testified to, he met with Inland Design, Chuck Dobson, for fifteen minutes, because Mr. Pierceall had provided Inland the plans, which was contrary to what the board's direction was.
I understand that, but.
So Mr. Klein, did you review these on your own with no input from any other engineer, other than engineers at Panoni?
Yes.
Thank you.
Did you?
And that's relevant.
Did our township manager email you separately and say you will not be doing the review of this project after the board requested that you were going to be? Did he not email you that afternoon and said, "Nate, you will not be doing this review, Inland will handle it"? That was after the board directed him to contact Panoni?
I don't recall that, Mr. Winters. It could be, but I don't recall ever stopping the review process. I thought once we had the green light to go, we went. But I could be forgetting something.
Well, I know, I remember it. Correct, that's what we, that's what the board decided, but.
Yeah, but you just said the opposite.
Correct, because that's what Scott did. He contacted Nate through email and said, "Inland will be handling this review, not you."
Who cares? It's not relevant.
It's relevant because the board didn't say that. The board didn't direct him.
But at the end of the day, Panoni did the review.
But we would have never even known that, that's my point.
Well, but it has nothing to do with the validity of this plan. This plan either complies with our ordinances or it doesn't.
I agree with that.
So if. You just spend an hour's a waste of time. If there's something that, some basis that Mr. Prince has to challenge the validity, the trustworthiness, the accuracy of Mr. Klein's review, then that is relevant to this inquiry. But to go through all of this about how many times he met with Chuck Dobson, or what he got when, or where, who he got it from, and when, has nothing to do with the validity of the plan, in my opinion.
I only want to say one thing in response, Mr. Fisher. It is, I agree with Mr. Kaplan that in my experience, it would not be unusual for prior engineers to review or to comment or to even look at plans. What differentiates those normal circumstances, from my experience to this matter is Mr. Klein's repeated statements in his review letters that he did not have any such inter, intercourse or intercommunication with other people, which I find an extremely unusual reference in an engineering review letter and which appears to be contrary to what the emails that Mr. Prince has are referring to. That's the only reason I believe it's relevant now.
There's an objection to BVA thirteen. I think the objection is sustained, so you can move on, please, Mr. Prince.
Well, you don't have to sustain the objection because the email is withdrawn. Now, Mr. Klein, I want to ask you some questions about your review. And I guess I'm going to have to ask you to get your file or have your assistant provide from your file your August twenty-second, 2018 review letter. Why are we doing prior review letters? I thought that these are the exhibits that were going to be used. We all, I thought we agreed to that.
I did too.
Then let me speak to that, because that's not what I agreed to. What we agreed to is that the board exhibits that were presented were self-authenticating because we reviewed them in advance and we agreed that the board exhibits being presented were what they purported to be and that people did not need to be called as witnesses to authenticate them. We never agreed, and I never agreed under any circumstances, that what you put in your book is all that's relevant to the plan.
No, but Mr. Orlando.
Excuse me, let me finish. If there is a review letter that relates to this plan, which is, I believe, what he just asked about, that is a relevant consideration to this board. And that is what I understood the board exhibits to be, self-authenticating, nothing more.
Right, but Mr. Orlando, excuse me. Prior to the first hearing, I circulated the list of proposed exhibits and I offered to everybody, is there anything else that you guys want that you think is relevant for the board to understand whether the plan complies? And each of you gave me some documents. You didn't bring in prior review letters from Mr. Klein. I mean, that's fine. If you think there's something in a prior review letter that's relevant, let's get to it and move on.
Oh, every time you do that, you just give them license to drag this out.
Well, Mark, I don't want a court to tell me I'm wrong for not letting him bring in a prior letter. So go ahead.
They're playing that. They're, I don't want to be disrespectful, but they're playing this board based on that.
I'm not really sure why a prior letter is relevant.
You can object. I see this as a big waste of time.
But what I'm frustrated at is if you have a letter that you expect Mr. Klein to talk about, then have it ready, you have it ready. Don't ask Megan, who is an engineer, and she's not his assistant, to go through his file and pull it out. You should have it ready if you want Mr. Klein to speak to it. We're not going to spend all day for her to go through a file. That's your job. So if you have a letter you'd like him to look at and testify to, then present it to him right now, please.
Madam Solicitor, first of all, don't talk down to me. I've been practicing law longer than you have.
So what?
Does it mean you're any better at presenting your witness now?
Excuse me, everybody, you have one option really right now. We're going to be polite to each other and we're going to get through this, or we're going to end it and it's going to be the end-all. Excuse me, Mr. Prince, real quick. We're going to probably take a break here for twenty minutes for our lunch. But I want to remind everybody, the discord here, I would have to agree with Solicitor Camp. We are so unprepared with our questions. You're wasting a lot of time for people and you're not doing your clients any favor and you're certainly not doing the board any favors by not having these things prepared ahead of time. Let's take our twenty-minute recess right now. We'll regroup. If you have questions, you want to answer for your questions, please have them prepared when we regroup.
Mr. Schreiber, you interrupted me, I'd like to finish my comments.
Finish your sentence and then we're going to take a break.
Thank you very much. Madam Solicitor, all you had to do was ask me why I raised the question. And I would have been happy to tell you. The problem is, if you look at his subsequent review letters, he references to a paragraph number and says, "sustained, resolved", but he doesn't address what it is that's resolved or sustained. The only letter in which he did that, in which he addresses what the numbers are, is his first August twenty-second review letter. All I was going to try and get at by introducing that was to show him that so that when I ask him questions about the November second review letter or the December review letter, we have the reference to the section in what he actually originally said.
But Mr. Prince, do you recall me asking you, when I circulated the list of proposed board exhibits, do you have anything else you'd like to add? You could have said, "I want all of Mr. Klein's prior review letters to be admitted." I would have been happy to do that. You didn't do that. So if you have another letter, can you get it, please? So that when we come back in twenty minutes, you can hand it to him?
You have it. I took this copy.
I don't have it.
I took this copy out of your introduction that the township gave me.
Mr. Prince, this is not a board exhibit. No, this is your exhibit. If you want the board to consider it and you want Mr.
It was submitted to me and the right to know.
That doesn't mean it's an exhibit at this hearing.
Twenty-minute recess, we'll regroup.